We're gonna have to.
That's good. That's good news. Yeah.
That's the hard part.
Yeah, it's like two weeks recovery. Well, two weeks in the hospital, almost three months to six months recovery. This one was only in the hospital for like.
Chair Packer, we should be good to go when you're ready.
All right, we will welcome everyone out then. This is the Kaysville City Planning Commission meeting of June 26, 2025. We will call this meeting to order and call for any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we move Agenda Item Number Three, a conditional use permit for Oasis Construction, and place it after Agenda Item Number Five. Just in an effort to wait for someone to arrive here. Well, since there's no second to my motion, then I guess the motion fails. So, okay, we'll go in the order then that we have. Very good. So we will start with Agenda Item Number Three, a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation, 789 East 880, et cetera, et cetera.
That, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm filling in for Mindy this evening, so she's been the main point of contact with us. I did want to just let the Planning Commission know that the representative here tonight, his name is Todd, I'm not sure of the last name, but he is not the property owner, but a business partner who's here since Mr. Burton couldn't make it this evening. So as mentioned, this is a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B, and the property is at 789 East 80 North. And this is just an aerial view of the property. Here's just a, this is our shortcut, is this is a screenshot from Google Street View, but this is what the front of the property looks like. The business would be for Oasis Construction, and they install prefabricated pools as well as do doing other types of general construction and renovation work. My understanding is that there will be no clients or employees coming to the home, and all the construction activities and services will take place off-site. I believe also materials will be delivered onsite and shouldn't be coming to the home. There are some, some pieces of equipment that would be stored at the property truck, a skid steer, a mini excavator, and two trailers. And it does say here the staff report that some of that equipment is used out of state during winter, so there's potential that it would only be here in Kaysville about half of the time. And if they do need to store the equipment, they have committed to keeping that behind backyard, the gated fence, and out of public view. He, Mr. Burton, is working on getting their doppel licensure in place, and as our practice is, is we would not issue that business license on that until that doppel licensing does come through. We do have Todd, the representative here this evening, to address any questions the Planning Commission may have for him, but that is all I have for you. And just as kind of a caveat, if the Planning Commission isn't comfortable taking action on this this evening because the property owner himself isn't here, I think that is fair, but the representative is here to address any questions. And so if those questions or concerns you may have are addressed essentially by Todd, then feel free to make a motion to approve as you see fit.
All right, thank you. Discussion among the commission? Does anyone have questions for our business partner here? Any concerns?
Question just for Melinda or staff. Has there been any contact from any neighbors or anybody based on the sign or?
I don't believe so. We did place a sign out on the property last Friday, as is our practice, and Anne hasn't taken any calls, neither have I. Mindy has been out of the office for a couple days, but those calls roll over, so there's a chance they could have had a question or a comment come in, but not to our knowledge.
To me, most, most everything looks pretty straightforward. You know, we have the regulations in place as far as equipment and materials, and it looks like the owner intends to comply with all that, so I have no personal concerns.
Try move to approve the conditional use permit for a major B home occupation, Oasis Construction located at 789 East 80 North for Jake Burton, with no additional conditions.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we will start the voting then.
Aye.
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 Very good, motion passes. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, conditional use permit for farm animals located at 336 South Marie Circle for Randy Beckstrom.
Thank you, Chair Packer. This conditional use permit originally came in as a code enforcement complaint that was submitted on May 20 regarding issues with farm animals on the property. Following that complaint, the applicant, Randy Beckstrom, submitted a conditional use permit application on June 6 with the understanding that the property has adequate square footage to accommodate three goats. The total property has a square footage of 20,168 feet with an R120 zoning designation, and because of our farm animal regulations, that would allow for three goats with each goat being allotted 5,445 square feet. As far as additional regulations, our yard and structure regulations do stipulate that structures for the care and keeping of farm animals need to be located at least 50 feet from dwellings on adjacent properties. Following a discussion with the applicant today, we did come to the understanding that the current fencing on-site does need to be modified to meet this standard, but staff is satisfied that the applicant understands that requirement and is intending to do that as soon as possible. The applicant also submitted a mitigation plan as per code requirements explaining how dust, odor, noise, et cetera, will be controlled on-site, and staff found that their mitigation plan was sufficient for the code requirements. A sign was placed on the property on June 20. As I said, this originated from that code enforcement complaint. There had been a prior code enforcement complaint in December of 2023. At that time, there were, I believe, a number of goats in the property. The property owner then removed those goats, they sold the goats, and then we received this new complaint back in May. Since this application has been received, we've taken two phone calls from neighbors expressing concern, given the history of complaints on this property, and then we also had three comments submitted to the Planning Commission from other neighbors expressing concerns and asking that additional mitigation measures be considered. As staff, given the conditions that we saw on the site today when we walked the site with the applicant, the actual number of goats on-site was three adult goats with seven baby goats. As far as the count of animals allowed, under our code, you wouldn't consider baby goats as counting for the goat total, so with the current circumstances, we feel that the applicant has met the required standards for the conditional use permit and understands the need to accommodate the structures on-site to meet that 50-foot distance requirement. I also do want to note, given the complaints we received about odor and noise, we did take care when we went out to the site today to see that. We didn't detect any issues with odor while we were on-site. It seemed to be well taken care of and properly maintained, and that nature of the concern, I think, has been adequately addressed. With that in mind, the Link Commission is free to suggest additional mitigation considerations, but staff would recommend approval for this particular permit, given the findings as stated.
And I, if I can just take a moment and add as well for the benefit of the audience who may not understand the nature of conditional use permits and how those work. In Utah, conditional uses are considered permitted uses, but they may require additional conditions to mitigate any type of impacts that could be negative to the neighborhood or surrounding properties. So oftentimes, individuals think that when something like a conditional use permit is on the agenda, that it's whether we approve it or not, or deny it. But generally speaking, it's very difficult to legally deny a conditional use permit. You don't have to eliminate issues or mitigate every single possible issue. You just have to mitigate those reasonable issues. So this is something that is permitted in any residential zone in Kaysville as long as the property does meet the certain size requirements as indicated in our code. Going back to what Ms. McNamara said earlier, those suckling offsprings, we do not count that towards the overall count, but when they are weaned off of their mother, they do need to be rehomed if they would exceed the number of allowed animals. So I did send an email to the Planning Commission yesterday just, you know, asking the consideration of whether or not you would allow public comments, and that's another thing, our bylaws generally don't allow for public comments or on administrative items, which is just kind of a technicality of administrative items, which this is considered are just basically if you meet code, it's allowed. And so we did want to just communicate that. And so given the concerns that some of the neighbors had, I did recommend that they submit comments through that contact form. And again, we did receive those, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to read those comments. Those comments have also been provided to the applicant this evening.
Very good. Yeah, we appreciate the work that's gone into this application so far from staff. Also appreciate the letter we have here outlining some of the mitigation plans from the owner, the applicant, and the letters that we've received from neighbors. That's always a great way to share your information, and we do appreciate that communication. I'm sure we've all had a chance to read those. Do we want to hear from the applicant at this point? Is that appropriate or?
Yeah, I have a quick question for staff, if that's okay.
For staff?
Yeah. So the animals that were the subject of the complaint, and is it, is it all just goats, or are there any other animals? It's just the goat and then the number of goats?
I believe the original complaint had listed some other types of animals. I think they had included chickens and maybe swine at one point, but when we were on-site today, the only animals we saw were the goats mentioned, and then chickens, I believe there are six chickens on-site, which would be allowed under our code.
They are or not?
They are.
They are allowed, okay.
Yeah, those, you do not need a conditional use permit for the birds, the fowl.
Okay.
But there are limits, right, with the foul?
We do have a square footage requirement per animal, so you're required to have 500 square feet in lot area per chicken. Given the size of the applicant's property, six chickens would be in compliance with that requirement.
Okay, and they're permitted, they're, it's, they're.
Yes.
It's not conditional or not?
It's not conditional for chickens, no.
And there's, you could have animals in every category if you want, as long as you have the square footage?
So you would need a conditional use for goats and any other farm animal. Fowl and rabbits are the only ones that don't require conditional use.
Theoretically, you could have fowls, goats, horses, and swine, if you had enough.
If you had enough square footage, yes.
Yeah, and then just to provide some clarity, because I know there are audience members here this evening. So as Anne mentioned, we did go out on-site today. We pulled a measuring tape from the corner of this house to the fence line, and it was about 17 feet. And so the code stipulates that the areas where you're keeping the animals need to be at least 50 feet from a dwelling. So we did go into the backyard and also pulled a tape really from kind of the fence just south of where this structure is here. And they, they will need to move the gates for the pens to accommodate that additional, okay, if it's 17 feet, they've got to come up with another 33 feet from this fence line. But I also let them know that, you know, they, given the angle of this property, that they could angle that back at the same direction and still meet that 50 feet so that it's kept from, from all sides. So the, Ms. Beckstrom was agreeable to that, and we told her we'd give her a couple of weeks to get that done, to become into compliance, to have those. There were just some, like, construction fencing or fencing type, anyway, that they would just need to relocate, and that should keep that from the, the distance here from the neighboring property.
Is that then inspected again once that's complete?
Yeah, I mean, we could have, we could have her submit photos, or we could go back out and just verify that that work was done.
Is the applicant here who, would you be willing to answer a few questions? Yeah, if you would come up and just for the record, state your name there and.
Randy Beckstrom.
So the, you know, the issue of a conditional use permit, it does have the limits as to the number of, of animals. I don't know a lot about goats. How long do goats typically, how long are they suckling off, you know?
I typically leave them on for at least six months.
Okay, and do you have a plan as far as keeping that number of adult goats within the?
Yeah, so sometimes I'll sell an adult goat and then continue to raise one of the babies to adulthood. Other times, I'll just sell all the babies once they're weaned.
Okay. That, I think that was my main question. Do we have other questions? This is a great opportunity to.
Do you mind if I bring up a couple points?
If you would, yeah, that would be fine.
The rat concern, if you look on that screen directly behind the Williams' property is a shed that contains chickens, that right there, and that is what the rats are eating. I have no control over their rat population and what they're doing to mitigate that. All grain on my property is kept in trash bins that are not accessible to rodents. I will say that the rodents, I think, are living in the hay shelter and running back and forth between that chicken food and the hay shelter. And then also, I have letters of support from these other two neighbors that are also our backyard neighbors. I didn't submit them because I just recently got them, but I can email them if that is beneficial.
So I'm just, I keep flipping back to this letter that you had that explained some of the, some of your plan for controlling odor, dust, noise, pests.
And the yard is gravelled, so there's not a dust concern. I also have tons of videos of those construction sites over there producing lots of dust. And yeah, flies were a problem the first year I had goats, but I've constantly remained in contact with my neighbors trying to get feedback on what they felt, if there were the problems that they had. And I never received any feedback from the Williams' or the Gurneys, or just the people behind them.
So you mentioned that you've done this for a while then, that you're pretty familiar.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I started with goats in 2020.
And after the first complaint, did you say that the goats were sold?
Yeah, my husband and I were separated, and I thought we were going to have to sell the house anyway, so we sold them and didn't have goats on the property for six to eight months.
Okay. And it's just like a typical process that you go through, like with the baby goats, raising, selling?
So for dairy goats to produce milk, they have to be bred almost every year. And so I breed them in the fall, and then they usually have their babies in the springtime, sometime between February and April.
And you said they're usually weaned off at six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? We don't want to make you stand up here the whole time. Okay, we can let you sit back down. We know where to find you, I guess, if we have more questions, so. questions, so. We did receive the letters from people who had some concerns. Do we want, as a commission, to allow any public comments at this time, or should we consider that satisfactory? Okay. So we'll allow, I suppose...
Do you want to just make a motion?
Should we make a motion?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we do allow for some comment with regard to this conditional use application from the public.
All second.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll allow comments here, then, from any public who would like to make a comment. You do have a three-minute limit. We ask that you would come up to the microphone, state your name. We don't do a lot of interaction. If you're new to some of our meetings, we just allow you to have your time. We don't answer questions and have discussions because we don't want to eat into your time. So you're free to ask questions, but we would wait until after the public comment section to make any discussion on any of that, so.
I'm Reese Gurney.
Sorry. Yes, please, thank you. Say your name, which you did. Sorry, thank you.
So I've lived where I live for 31 years. The shed that she's blaming the rats on belongs to me. I have four chickens, banties. I have a 50-pound bag of food that I keep in a locked container. So I cannot believe that I'm responsible for those rats. I've never seen them before till now. I shot one a couple of days ago with a BB gun. I saw two yesterday morning, running up and down our fence line. I tried to shoot them again, and where did they run? Into her yard, where she keeps her hay. So I don't want to be blamed for the rat population. I can put up with the stink, and it does smell, regardless of whether you smelled it today, come over when it rains. I can put up with the crying of the babies 24 hours, nonstop, so you can't even open your windows at night. And if you don't know anything about goats, you need to come over and spend some time and see, because they do, they cry 24 hours. That sounds just like a little baby. And I can tolerate that, too, but I cannot tolerate rats. That should be a major health issue, in my opinion. And I cannot assume responsibility that my four chickens are drawn to rats. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Williams. I'm the next-door neighbor, the 17 feet between the two. I say everything that Reese just said. We have never had rat problem. Even when she had goats four years ago, there wasn't a rat. There was a mouse, mice problem, but no rats. Three weeks ago, we found, within a week, we found two rats this big. I've got a picture of one that's in the garbage can, two of them, this big. We have grandkids, we have dogs that are there, and like Reese said, we can keep up, we can put up with some of the things that are going on with the amount of goats. But we cannot, we cannot handle the rats. It is a health issue, and it is a big problem. And it's continuing to happen. And there are rats. They have a cat that kills a rat nearly every night, a couple of weeks ago. So there is a big problem with that. And so that's our concern and our issue. I appreciate that they're going to move some things so that it's not so... I know that they planted some trees, but that's not going to help anything for years until those get fully grown. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Commission. Thank you for taking your time to listen to us tonight. My name is Cindy Garlick, and I operate a relatively large dairy goat herd. I did not see rats at my place until there started to be construction in my area. And when that construction started and houses started going in behind me, I noticed a large influx of rats that came in from the fields and things that were around me. I know that that can be a challenge, and we deal with that a lot. I also have chickens, and I can tell you, my chickens outsmell my goats five to one. They're a lot stronger in aroma than what my goats are. I do know that Randy does a really good job of trying to keep things clean and hygienic for her animals, and that she does a good job of trying to keep in touch with her neighbors and make things mutual for everybody. But it is a great opportunity for her family to learn and be educated, not only on how to live in a neighborhood, but how a food source comes. Most of us have children who don't know where our food comes from, that comes from the grocery store. And so it's an opportunity for not only her children, but neighbors in the area to be able to understand how food is produced and how that works for a farmer. In our area, we invite our kindergarten over every springtime so that they can meet the animals, they can see a cow, they can interact with the dairy goats, they can see the sheep. So they have an opportunity to become educated and understand how our food is produced and what has to happen in order for that to happen. And so I would suggest that you allow her to work with her neighbors and be able to continue to maintain what she has and do what she can do to help mitigate the rat problem, because it certainly is a challenge.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joy Birch. I live on the corner of Marie Circle and Lauter Drive. So I'm across the circle. Yep, that one. I just wanted to address the talking to the neighbors. If saying something on Instagram is communicating with your neighbors, I guess we've been communicated with. So I do smell, the smell. My affair, I have two little dogs, two Yorkies, and when these mice are being, or mice, rats, things are being found that are dead already. They're coming across to Joanne's yard, dead. They have been baited. And if my dog was to get a hold of that, or the bait itself, I would not have my dogs, my pets. I am worried about that. The smell is one thing, the crying is constant. I'm far enough away that my bedroom window, I can leave my window open, and I don't smell it all the time. When I'm out in my yard, I can smell it. Joanne cannot. Joanne and Dave Williams cannot leave their windows open in the springtime and get across breeze without the noise and the smell. I don't know what you guys saw, but it is constant animals. It's not just chickens. And there's lots of cats, there's bunnies, there have been a turkey at a time. It's a farm. And if the placement of the area where the farm is was tweaked on the other side of the yard, it would be well away from anybody else's property. They do back up to a ton of neighbors. I think they have six or seven actual adjacent neighbors. But they just picked the wrong spot to put pens for the goats. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Joanne Williams, 331. I'm 17 feet away. There hasn't been any communication with the neighbors. I'm sorry, there hasn't been. She talks about honesty, and finally I told her the honest truth and said, "This is too much." I hear it all the time. We can't open our windows. I can't use my backyard. I love my backyard. It's taken me 31 years to get it to where my family and I really can enjoy it. We can't go out there. My kids, my grandkids say it stinks bad out here, Mom, Grandma, and it stinks. And it's noisy, and we can't, we can't open our windows, and it's loud. And there hasn't been communication, and the rats really are a problem and one that I think that you may be concerned about. I know we have, I have a little 18-month-old that goes out and goes all the way around the yard, and if he would have stumbled upon those rats, he doesn't know. So really, I don't really think there has been communication. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? All right, we will close the public hearing portion, then, and go back into discussion. A few thoughts just from me. This is one of those tricky, you know, ages-old conversations of, you know, what are people allowed to do on their own property versus what, you know, should a community impose upon property owners, what kind of regulations there might be. As was kind of stated at the beginning, a conditional use permit is something that is allowed. It's something that homeowners are allowed to do on their property, and it does have some restrictions and things like that. And it is very difficult for us as the city to deny that use. It is built into the code. And so there is a difficulty to, you know, straight-up deny the conditional use permit. Having said that, there are, you know, plenty of restrictions that are in there, and the definitions can be very tricky on what is, you know, where's the limit of smell, or noise, or dust. And, you know, that's a tough one to discuss back and forth. But we do have, you know, the numbers. And so, you know, given the conditional use permit, we would expect that all of those things would be followed, that there would be three goats on property, three. And as we already pointed out, that does not include suckling animals that are still, you know, in infancy. That there be, as, yeah, says there, "Control of odor, dust, noise, pests, flies, rodents, et cetera." It's hard to pin down. You know, you all are front-row guests to this, and so I can't come in and be like, "Well, let me tell you, I know where the rats are coming from." We know that rats do not, they don't care about property boundaries. And so it's really difficult. But yes, you know, the applicant would be required to do their best to control that kind of thing. That's just kind of my thoughts at this point. Just, you know, the inclination is that we're going to probably grant this conditional use permit, but that, you know, we want to stress that that means that the restrictions seen here in city code would need to be followed very closely.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask a couple of questions. Melinda, could you go back to the previous slide you just had with the code section? Okay. Talks there about the applicant shall submit a plan for showing how they will successfully control odor, dust, noise, pests, which is flies and rodents and drainage. What is the plan that they have submitted?
So they did include with their application details on that. I can go through each of those.
It is in the pack.
It's on page eight, I believe.
Okay, now there we go.
And it does cover flies, rodents, noise, dust, and drainage.
I will say that there is a staff member who may or may not be here this evening, who has had rats at their home, and there are no animals with, I mean, they have dogs. Neighbors don't have any type of farm animals. The size that's been described this evening has been the same of what they have reported. And as you mentioned, right, like, we don't have GPS trackers on the animals. We don't know where they live, and they don't care about property boundaries. They care about food sources and water. You know, where they're coming from, where they're staying, I don't, I don't know. I think that would be very difficult for us to figure out, frankly. And I think it can happen, as I said, with or without animals, because this, and it's, I don't think Mindy would mind me sharing that, but she's had, she's had that issue at her home over, over in her neighborhood, and they don't, none of her neighbors have any farm animals at all. So I, and she's shown us pictures, again, the same size as what's been described here this evening. I've never seen a rodent that big here in Utah, thankfully. I hope I never do. But just kind of setting that out there that, you know, I think it can happen with or without the animals. I think the hard thing is, once they are there, getting rid of them. I think Mindy and her husband ended up hiring a professional to come out and assist them with that after they worked on it for several weeks and just weren't as successful as they needed to be. So that's just something to share.
Yeah, and I mean, I would say, where I live, we have had, and I think we still do on occasion, have rats in our yards, us and our neighbors. We do have one neighbor that has chickens. The surmising is that, you know, they come to eat the feed that's left on the ground, but we don't know that for certain. And even when there were no chickens there, there have been rats around. So it's, it's hard to say what draws them and where they come from and why.
And I think that's not to say it's not a concern and not a health issue, and we heard, you know, concerns for children and pets, and, you know, the methods need to be safe and everything. But what we do have control over is the plan, you know, that the person is doing as much as they can. And that's expected by code. But yeah, that's a difficult one. I agree.
Just echo what Spin said. One of the reasons we don't normally allow public comments for administrative items is it just kind of gives people false hope that there's something we can really do about it. If it's in the code and it's allowed, there's not a lot that we can do. The real answer is if you don't like what the code says, then try to get the code changed. That's not easy to do either, but that's, that's the real answer, because that's what our code says, and those are the rights that people have.
Yeah, I mean, with conditional uses, we can require mitigation. It's very difficult to turn down a conditional use. The only time we could is if there's absolutely nothing we can do to mitigate. But in this case, we have some standards, or at least some items that are to be controlled and a plan to be submitted. The applicant has done that, has submitted a plan for controlling those items. With that, it seems to me that we're pretty much on the hook to say the conditional uses is to be permitted, because they have submitted a plan for mitigation.
Question, if this applicant or anyone in the city were to be found in violation of the code, you know, noncompliant, what could potential consequences be with this kind of a thing? Just, I don't know what the end result would be of an issue.
Well, first of all, yes, we have the regrettable responsibility of dealing with code enforcement. It's actually one of the most difficult tasks that we have. Usually when people come to the city and complain, it's out of frustration with a situation that they've dealt with. that they've dealt with for quite a while and they finally kind of reach a, a tipping point. Um, and then the person who is in violation, if we find that there is a violation, it's often upsetting to them, you know, why didn't my neighbor come talk to me? Um, we actually included on our code enforcement form a section like, have you tried to talk to your neighbor about that? Most of the time they haven't, um, and kind of just expect the city to be a mediator between the two, which puts us in a tough position. Um, but to answer that question, um, generally speaking, um, with code enforcement, we come in, we go field verify. Um, with something like this, if it's odor or, you know, dust, um, noise, we may not be on site when that is happening. Um, the applicant did mention today that, you know, that it was no breeze today when we were there. We, we were there for what, about 20 minutes, maybe 25 minutes? Um, today there was no odor. Um, I, I can't speak to any other day. Um, but we would go out and field verify and determine if there is a violation. Um, and if there is, then we, we make every attempt to try and get voluntary compliance. Um, the alternative to that is, and we'll generally give a couple of weeks to come into compliance, as I mentioned today, being on site. Um, I felt like it was appropriate to give the applicant a couple of weeks to get those fencing moved. That, you know, is a pretty significant, um, item to accomplish in a short period of time. Um, so we generally do give two weeks to come into compliance. We, um, we have a system where we track that. We come back and we set a kind of a follow-up date and we'll go back and, and look again. And if it's been remedied, then great, we close the code enforcement case out. If not, then generally speaking, we'll give another round of, of encouragement or compliance to come into, um, you know, to have those remedies taken care of. Um, if that fails, then we start working with our city attorney and, um, at least in this instance where there is a conditional use permit, we could go through the process to revoke that conditional use permit. And, um, and then there have been instances too where we've had the city attorney file, uh, a case or a charge, a citation against the offending party if they are either, well, generally it's an unwillingness to come into compliance. Um, but to just kind of set some expectations as well, um, you know, a lot of times we do have parties that are saying, this is what's happening or this is not what's happening. Um, we don't set surveillance out. We can't set, you know, somebody outside of property for hours on end to determine if there is a violation. Um, we do our best and when we fail to get compliance from, uh, you know, from a, a resident or a property owner, then we go through the process of, uh, trying to get that compliance forced through the courts.
Any more conversation or are we ready for a motion? Do we have other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Randy Bextrom at 336 South Marie Circle, uh, for the farm animals as noted in the staff report. Uh, given the findings that, um, the applicant has submitted a plan for mitigation as required by code, um, and is, uh, will, uh, be held in compliance with that. I would also maybe add to that, that the staff, um, perhaps monitor that on occasion to make sure that those, um, mitigation measures are working and, uh, see if anything needs to be modified from that.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, we will start the voting. Do you want to start us off?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion passes. We appreciate all of your time and effort in coming here today. We will move on now then to agenda item number five. Stony Brook Community School Parking Determination at 579 South Main Street for Anna Crabbe.
Thank you, Chair Packer. Uh, I want to start by saying this is kind of a unique agenda item for us. Uh, it's not really an application, but it is a situation in which the code instructs us to have planning commission, um, look and consider what additional measures might be needed. So, property owner, uh, Anna Crabbe, applied for Kaysville City Business License to operate a preschool and micro education entity at 579 South Main Street. Um, for the commission's benefit, the number of parking spaces required table that we have in the code does not provide a specific number of spaces required for schools. There is a table row labeled for hospitals, schools, and civic buildings. Um, but on that line, the code states that the number of spaces is to be determined by specific review, review by the planning commission. Um, in accordance with that, staff has done research on what cities in nearby jurisdictions have adopted as far as regulations for similar uses for preschools, um, and that has informed the information that we're presenting today. Uh, as an overview, uh, in looking at similar cities, there was no kind of one gold standard used by every city that we looked at. However, um, generally speaking, uh, what we found was the norm is to require one space per employee with an additional space required per five to six children. Um, that's as close as you can get to a standard, um, with cities that are different in size, population, and demographics. Um, with that in mind, the site in question, uh, has roughly 11 potential spaces, um, that could be used for parking. Uh, there is also a pull through driveway access already onsite that could potentially, um, accommodate two to three more spaces. Um, with the site conditions taken into account as well as the details provided by the applicant, um, there would be a total of four employees at maximum staffing levels and a max of 26 students on the property, um, at any given time. Uh, with that in mind, planning commission could reasonably require eight spaces with one being required per employee and additional space per, for, per five to six children. Given that the site has sufficient space to accommodate more than those eight spaces, staff doesn't anticipate a need for requiring different, additional parking. Um, I'd also like to make a note, um, that because this, this business license application includes, uh, the intent to run a micro education entity, uh, there is a recent amendment to state code that stipulates, um, that municipalities are not allowed to require excessive additional parking for these kinds of uses. Given that our code does not specify, uh, a specific number of spaces and it's given to planning commission, uh, to make that review, there's no real barometer by which we can ensure that they're not in excess. Um, but given the abundance of parking already existing onsite, um, staff doesn't believe it's likely that we would be found in violation of state code, uh, in, by means of excessive parking requirements. Um, as far as the use itself, um, just to kind of clarify, the applicant has provided, uh, additional information about the number of students and the pickup, drop-off schedule that they're anticipating. Um, with, uh, staggering of times and number of students as seen here on this slide, um, as just kind of a final note, the existing site layout, um, because it is zone professional business, uh, there is that 20-foot setback requirement that is stipulated between the professional business use and a residential use. However, there is an exception in the professional business zone that states that, um, as long as there is landscaping between the proposed business and the neighboring residences, um, that that, um, can be determined to be sufficient in absence of that 20-foot setback. Uh, the applicant has provided a site plan to demonstrate that the flow of vehicles won't impede pedestrian or vehicle traffic. Um, and staff is confident that based on the research we've done, um, as well as evaluating the existing onsite conditions, um, that requiring extra parking would not be likely to be necessary. Um, and staff is recommending approval, so to speak. Um, but I believe the applicant is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you. I'll just say, the report makes it hard to come up with questions. Like you, you do such a good job. What, you know, this, this was a new one, right? Uh, I've never, you know, had a, uh, community school parking determination, but you're like, hey, code says this, planning commission does it. We don't have a limit. Here's five other cities and what they do. Um, great. This is, this is great.
This points out again how great our zoning code is. A great example for you for budget time.
Yes, actually. I mean, that, that was part of the dialogue that we had is like, we'll need to do, and with the applicant as well. So, we'll need to do some research to determine what a, a benchmark on that is because our code doesn't provide anything, but it says you have to do this job. Um, so anyway, great work, Ann.
Yeah, great work.
Absolutely.
Prepping list.
Great report.
Yeah, I, I feel like the number is good, um, but what other thoughts and comments?
I was just gonna ask Ann. So is there street parking allowed there on, on Main Street?
Yeah, I mean, it, so it's, it's UDOT facility. Um, it's a public right-of-way and they, you know, I mean, I, I don't think UDOT appreciates the parking.
There are no restrictions.
But there's no restrictions either.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, other than what's in our code, which would be, um, first of all, I think it's prohibited to park large semis, which happens sometimes anyway. Um, but, you know,
Not far from there. I've seen the semis parked.
Yeah, uh, just, just further south of here. It happens quite frequently by the assisted living facility. Um, but our, our, on, our code, um, and I will say this, that, again, we, that is not our responsibility to deal with parking because we, we are not deputized. We are not post-certified. So, the parking complaints do go to our police department. Um, but essentially you can park on a public street for up to 48 hours and, um, as long as you move the vehicle, you can park for another 48 hours. So, um, and I don't think there would be any overnight parking associated with this, but, um, yeah, so there
You're not gonna have any sleepovers.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Oh my gosh, this is awesome. We wish we had more applicants like this. Which actually, I, I do want to compliment, um, Ms. Crabbe for being very thorough and, I mean, I was like, holy cow, within a few hours, she got us this exhibit with cars.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, good job. Um, I, you know, it was like, it could be handwriting function just as well, but, um, we have been working with, with, um, Ms. Crabbe for a period of time. Um, they've had questions about other properties that looked at. Some of them were outside of Kaysville, but, um, you know, the, the commission may recall that this was on an agenda for a rezone last year and we had an oversight of that 20-foot, um, it was, it was an application to rezone at General Commercial. And after it left planning commission, we realized that General Commercial did not have that, um, exception for the setback with the landscaping. And so we notified the applicant. We ended up refunding the, the, um, fee as that's something that we should have caught before it ever came to planning commission. So that never went to city council. Um, but that said, I think this, um, I, like, I've had multiple conversations with a realtor representing the property owner. They've tried really hard to find a user for this space and have really not been successful. So I think this is a, a great use of kind of a, I'm gonna just kind of say, it's kind of a funky little property. It's kind of a funky little location, uh, off the beaten path from like major commercial type of things. And so I think a use like this really is, um, a good fit for the property and, um, even the location. And so it would be nice to have this actually be used rather than just sitting there.
Yeah, I'd like to know how it got there in the first place. That would be an interesting story perhaps. But I think, I agree. I think you all have done a great job in, um, you know, examining parking and what is similar and, and coming up with, I think, a reasonable number. You know, having been associated with kids and grandkids going to preschools and to, you know, other kinds of little schools, the big thing is always when they have like a Christmas program or a graduation or something like that and then everybody shows up. And the question is, where do they all park? Um, in this case, they can park on the street. You know, if you're gonna have a, a one or two off like that a year. Um, so, uh, that doesn't concern me. Um, and I think for their normal use, I think it's got adequate parking. I think you all have done a great, great job in analyzing that.
On another note, our senior planner just hit her one-year mark this week.
Really? Already?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
So, I think it's extra nice that this week of her one-year anniversary, she's receiving some very nice and, and well-do compliments.
Um, I have a question about what we're approving. We're approving the parking determination of staff. Okay. Well, then I would move that we approve the Stony Brook Community School Parking Determination at 579 South Main Street for Anna Crabbe.
Second.
All right. Should we just do a group vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. Good luck. Approval of the minutes, June 12th, 2025.
I was able to listen to this, so I don't feel like I need to abstain. It's very interesting.
I also listened to it the next day. As I fell asleep too early.
Does anybody want to approve it or disapprove of it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, other matters that come before the planning commission?
Well, I, just a couple things. Um, our consultant will be out next Thursday, Friday morning is the fourth. Um, so they're gonna do another tabling event and they will be at the breakfast that Kaysville City hosts, um, so on the 4th of July. And hopefully, um, we'll, we'll put some social media posts out about that. Um, but hopefully that'll, um, provide another opportunity and folks will engage and provide more feedback. Um, I'm glad some of you that weren't able to attend the joint meeting were able to watch that. Um, I, it was really some great information. Um, next steps with that would be, um, we'll have another follow-up survey that'll come in August and probably another open house in August or September timeframe as well. And, um, and now I think kind of comes the hard part of like the existing conditions is kind of the easier is like this is, this is what, you know, I mean, it's utilities. It was, uh, the market analysis, which was fascinating. Um, the hard part will be now we're taking input from the community and kind of crafting what that vision of the city center would be. So, um, but the consultant, GSBS and the sub-consultants have been great so far. Working with them, um, has been a really nice process. Um, we, let's see, for July, we will have one planning commission meeting on July 10th. on July 10th. The next meeting date would have been July 24th, which is a state holiday. So you'll just have to come one time in July. And we did, I did receive a rezone application for the Presbyterian Church just right over here. They're wanting to rezone to mixed use. And the intent, the applicant, actually, I think his name is Jake Williams, and I was, okay, yes, this was Dave that was here this night. So he has a development background and works for a group that's done projects throughout Utah. And he has always wanted to convert an old church into a residence. And so he plans to save the building and would add some townhomes. And it would be that kind of live-work unit and some ground floor, commercial type of a thing. So we will, that just came in a couple days ago and have not had an opportunity yet to go through that application. But that will probably come to the planning commission for a public hearing in August. Maybe that, probably August 14th would be my guess. So that, I think, will be an exciting project and nice to see that someone wants to go to the efforts of saving this building over here, which I really appreciate the unique history of that, you know, building being a Presbyterian church. That's kind of unique. So that will be coming through. And I'm not sure of anything else at this point. Another project that we will be kicking off probably in August as well, just keep this on, you know, the state, I don't know what legislative session the last year or two amended the code on general plans and required that we will incorporate some type of water conservation element. And so we are going to work with GSBS, since they're already familiar with us. Oh, yes, they're already familiar with us, already working with them. So it's a little more seamless to just have them do that work. And so that's something that we'll be bringing forward to the planning commission later this fall. It's supposed to be adopted by the end of the year. So, and then, we just did that. Yes, yeah. So, yes, we, the city council at the last meeting did pass the amendments that the planning commission recommended on the subdivisions, so the boundary line adjustments. We've called them lot line adjustments, but now it's, they're, the state's telling us we got to call them boundary line adjustments. So that was approved at city council last week. And same with those stormwater standards that were all over my head. And I think most of us, as we're not stormwater civil engineers. So I think that's about it. Oh, yes, we, I don't know if I have mentioned this, we did receive a rezone application and at this point, probably about three weeks ago, maybe, from Symphony Homes and Ivory Homes for that area to south of the Sunset Equestrian Estates. So I was not able to attend the meeting yesterday. I had to be at a funeral. But we did have a meeting yesterday with the irrigation providers, the sewer district, and our internal utility providers. Ann attended. The meeting went well. But we're working through the development agreement that's been submitted. And I don't know, based on that meeting yesterday, if there was any tweaks that may need to happen. But I think that will be coming before the planning commission probably in August as well. But we really wanted to make sure that, especially this project, so not all of the properties that are over there are, I guess, participating in this rezone application. So there's a couple pockets of properties that, I think about 10 acres, maybe 12 acres, that wouldn't be part of this rezone. But the rest, I think it's about 52 acres that would be coming forward for that rezone. And they're proposing about 300 units. So there would be a number of large lots, single-family homes, that would be up towards the northern portion where the existing Sunset Equestrian Estates are located already. And they are also then proposing some smaller, like 8,000 square-foot lots, some 6,000 square-foot lots. This will have to be done through a development agreement if the council chooses to approve it. But they're also proposing about 100 townhomes. So 300 units total. And I have to say, I do appreciate the mindset of Symphony Homes wanting to make sure that we have adequate time to address anything, any of those concerns, making sure that we have a fully vetted application before we bring that to the planning commission. So we felt like, and Symphony agreed, that, you know, that's a lot of traffic, there's a traffic analysis that was submitted, you know, there's a lot of things over there that we just want to make sure we have time to address and in that development agreement before we bring that forward. So we'll be, you know, when that time comes, we'll be sending out public hearing notices as we do for every rezone. And so August, cancel your vacations. You'll want to be at both of those meetings with some of those exciting projects.
I think it's important to remind you then that Article 3, Paragraph 1 says that the first meeting of July, you pick a new commission chair. So put that on the agenda.
Chair Packer, is there a particular reason? Yes. Well, that actually brings up a couple other points. We did, the mayor and I held interviews last Thursday for planning commissioner alternate replacements. Ms. Shepherd has determined that she, I think, would like to serve another term, but it just may not fit into her life at this moment. So the mayor hasn't selected yet which one we would like to appoint. But we will, let's see. Oh, we moved, we did move up, and that happened, I think, the last council meeting as well. So Paul Toller, who's been our alternate, will become a regular planning commissioner. And then those interviews we held last week will replace Paul's appointment. We had, I think, nine or 10 applications that were submitted. A couple withdrew their names. But it's wonderful to work in a community where so many people want to serve. And in fact, I took a phone call yesterday from an individual. It was like, is it too late to apply? Like, yes, unfortunately, it is. But we'll keep, you know, their name kind of set aside for the next round. And so, yes, we will have some changes. We'll put that on the agenda for the July 10th meeting, I think it'll be, to appoint a new planning commission chair. So for those who don't understand how that works, if you're not at that meeting, your fellow commissioners will automatically nominate you. And so if you want to object to that nomination, you'll need to be at the meeting. I think that's usually how it works, right? But, you know, we'll be very sad to see Commissioner Shepherd leave. It's been, it's been great. She really kind of came with her background. She came in, kind of hit the ground running and had a good understanding of things. And, you know, so we appreciate her service and she'll be missed. But you can always come. I think that covers it.
From the seats, right?
In heckle.
Yes. Or, you know, you can watch from home in your pajamas.
Do the bylaws say anything about a vice chair? Because that would probably be a good idea.
So actually, Deborah has been our vice chair, right?
Oh, we do have.
Yeah. So we'll elect a chair and a vice chair at the July 10th meeting.
So stay, you should stay, because you'd just be moving right up.
Or was it, it has been you, right? Or no, it was?
I think it was.
Oh, it was Commissioner Yan Aaron? Okay. All right. Yep. So keep in mind, I'm getting the feeling that Chair Packer may not want to serve another year as the chair, but he's done a great job. And that's always an option too, so.
That's, and that's why I didn't want to tell you, I'm not going to be here on the 10th. I'll be in Raleigh, so. I know what that means, but.
You'll get a second year then, maybe? Yeah. So that's all they had.
All right.
Yeah.
We got nothing else on the agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.